I'll sleep for math this again. Is it six o'clock? I'd like to call the Committee of the Whole Public Safety, Finance, and Personnel Meeting of April 26, 2021 to order. Arivolo?
Present.
Brereton?
Here.
Flurry?
Present.
Frank?
Present.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee? McGee? McGee is absent. Porter?
Here.
Ratcliffe?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Nine present. As you can see, Mayor Chamberlain is not here this evening. We will do like we did last week, and we will appoint a temporary chair. Would you like to nominate someone?
I nominate Clayton Stevens.
I'll take roll call on that, though. Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman? McGee? I'm sorry. Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Let's see, do we have anybody for public comment tonight that has signed in?
We do not have anyone registered.
No one wants to speak tonight? Okay. Public forum.
We have none.
None? Public unfinished business, none. So that goes to page two. Public safety new business. Police Department update. Chief Woody?
Thank you. Alderman Stevens. Department update for Belvidere Police Department. Over the last month, we finalized the entry level lateral and promotional lists for the police department. Currently, we're conducting backgrounds on five entry level candidates and one lateral hire. Officer Lurch was terminated by the Fire and Police Commission after failing to complete the field training program. With his dismissal, we currently have two openings, with one person selected to fill one of the positions, but we're waiting on an academy date to be able to place that person into one of those positions. We currently are on waiting lists for two spots in May and two spots in September at the Police Training Institute. The department has one officer currently on maternity leave and another one on medical. Just over this last weekend, the department participated in med collection. Guess that would have been on Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00 at Belvidere Township Building, and we collected over 200 pounds of medication. That would conclude the update from the police department. I'll take any questions.
Any questions from anybody?
So you said you have two slots at two different academies or two, or the same academy at two different times reserved, hoping to fill?
Yep, we're on waiting lists in May and September. We have two slots for each of those months, but I'm told we're pretty low on the list, but it remains to be seen if we'll end up getting one of those.
And so you only need two, at this point, you'd be looking to put two people potentially. We don't have-
That's correct.
-four candidates or anything at this point.
Correct.
Okay.
Any more questions for the Chief Woody?
I had a question.
Go ahead, Marcia.
Thank you, Clayton. So Chief, how many officers are we short right now exactly?
In terms of... How many do we have actually employed with the department? Or how many officers do we have that are actively working? Are you referring to the?
No, I mean like, how many that we normally have as compared to how many we currently have, how many are we actually short-staffed?
Okay. Yeah, currently, we're at a staffing level of 43. That's our authorized staffing, and currently, we're at 41.
Okay, so we're two officers down?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Woody? Okay, moving along to B, purchase of four new squad cars.
Thank you, Alderman Stevens. If you'll turn to your memos in your packets, this will be a request for purchase of four new squad cars for the police department. Belvidere Police Department would like to begin the process of replacing four squad cars. We're requesting permission from the City Council to purchase two new 2021 Dodge Durangos and two new 2021 Dodge Chargers and the necessary replacement upfitting equipment. The approximate cost of purchasing a 2021 Dodge Durango and the necessary upfitting is approximately $46,115. The vehicle cost is $33,115. Upfitting costs are approximately $13,000. Now, this cost is approximate because as we start implementing the equipment, some of that equipment we can use, some of it cannot, and we have to purchase new. So that that cost is variable until we end up doing the upfitting at the installers. The approximate cost of purchasing a 2021 Dodge Charger and the necessary upfitting is approximately $40,000 and $40,000, $10. The vehicle cost is $30,000, $10. Upfitting costs are approximately $10,000, again, for the same reason as with the Durango. Until we know what equipment can be reused, we don't know what that cost is going to be specifically. The cost for upfitting the SUVs is more because the Dodge Charger... More than the Dodge Charger, because the equipment must be replaced due to the age of the Durangos. Since we last purchased the Durangos, they changed the body style, therefore, the cages have to be changed out because they don't fit the older body style. I would request a motion to purchase two 2021 Dodge Durangos at a cost of $92,230 and two 2021 Dodge Chargers at a cost of $80,020, with a total cost not to exceed $172,250. Payment to come from the 2022 capital fund line.
Can we have a motion to that effect? Motion by Flurry, how about a second? Second by Arivolo. Any questions on the purchase? Porter?
I have a question.
Porter first, how about, Marcia?
Okay, Chief. Couple of questions here. You know, I know that Chrysler Dodge are a big manufacturer, and we prefer to use them, you know, because they're a local manufacturer and everything, but what I'm wondering is, if you've done any type of reliability study, it seems like we're having a lot of problems with the, you know, just maintenance item problems with the squad cars. I know that they're worked hard and everything, and they go through a lot, but, you know, like, the Sheriff's Office uses, if I'm not mistaken, Ford Explorers. And I was wondering if you've done any type of reliability studies mainly for the SUVs to see if maybe those might be more reliable, and maybe we might want to consider going with those?
Yeah, we did look at going to the Ford Explorers for a period of time. And just based off conversations, informal conversations we had with the county, it seemed like they weren't having the maintenance issues that we were with our Durangos. And I think one of those reasons specifically is because the current Durangos that we have are not police rated. When we purchased those vehicles, they didn't offer a police rated Durango, which comes with upgraded suspension, additional engine modifications. They could handle the rigor of law enforcement driving. And so that was one of the... One of the things we identified was a potential issue with the maintenance problems that we're having with the Durango specifically. Plus, the Ford Explorers were then more than what the Durangos are, and now they're significantly more, probably thousands of dollars more, to the point where to go to all Explorers would more than offset the cost than what we're paying for the Durangos plus the maintenance. It just wouldn't necessarily be a financial cost savings to do that. Back probably six, 12 months ago, we looked at possible leases, and we identified with leases that there's an upfront savings to go to leases, but ultimately, you are then committing yourself for pretty much ever to having a vehicle payment. Where, you know, when you have years, like we did last year with COVID, where your financial stability is in question, it doesn't matter. Then you still are going to have those vehicle payments where, because we buy them outright, we were, we had some flexibility in terms of not buying more vehicles that year, trying to, you know, get by with what we had, fix what we, you know, needed to fix, things like that. So we have looked at other things, and now Durangos are police rated, so we feel much more comfortable with their ability to handle what we need them to do.
Marcia?
Thank you. So Chief, I noticed whenever we do traffic stops of any type, there's always more than one squad. Usually two, sometimes three or more, depending. But my question is, aside from not being able to cover as much territory patrolling, is there another reason that our officers don't partner so that maybe we could get away with having less squads? Because, you know, having two or more squads at every stop, we're covering less territory anyway.
Well, I think we lose the ability to handle multiple calls at any one time. I mean, you know, there's potentially only four officers, including the sergeant, on any one shift, depending on what time of year we're looking at. And if we have, you know, somebody or one or two officers that are either on a traffic stop or at a domestic or an accident, which generally are going to require two officers, then if we only have one other squad with two officers in it, they're only able to handle one other call. Where having officers individually in their squad cars, we can handle potentially four calls at any one time. And it may seem like, you know, there's multiple officers at traffic stops. That's not always the case. There's plenty of times where officers are, you know, doing traffic stops by themselves, and they're considered low-risk traffic stops, and it doesn't require multiple officers.
Okay, thank you. I was just wondering about that.
Yep, no problem.
Any other questions about the purchase? Tom?
This was a... Was this a budgeted item? I don't remember exactly.
Yes, sir. We did budget it in the capital budget.
Any other questions? Wendy?
Did we approve two last week?
No, well, yes, you approved to pay for two. Those two were actually authorized, I'm not sure exactly when. If you remember when the city was awarded that million-dollar grant, the CARES Act, shortly after that, I had requested to purchase two vehicles. The council had authorized it. We had ordered them, but we had just gotten them, probably within the last month. So it does, it takes that long to get them. So you may not necessarily see this come out of the capital budget for maybe, you know, three, four, or five months.
So we really needed six vehicles?
Well, we needed eight.
Oh.
Because we had budgeted for four last year, and we got two.
Any other question on the purchase? Oh, let's have a roll call. Yes to purchase, no not to purchase?
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Belvidere Police Department, requests for body worn camera network server. Oh geez, I'm sorry. I thought I was reading the same one. Sorry about that. Replacement of squad number two and the sale of two retired police vehicles.
Thank you, Alderman Stevens. If you can turn to your memo in your packets for recommendation for replacement of squad number two. On March 6, 2021, squad two was involved in a crash later determined by the insurance company to be a total loss. CCMSI has determined that they will issue an insurance claim check to the city for $27,062.50. A replacement vehicle, being a 2021 Dodge Charger, has been located through the Kuhnus Dodge dealership of Belvidere. Cost of the vehicle is $30,010. Required upfitting equipment for approximately $10,000 would bring the total cost for the vehicle to $40,010. After applying the insurance check, Belvidere Police Department is requesting that the remaining balance of $12,948 be paid for with the sale of two retired squad cars. One 2012 Dodge Durango and one 2014 Dodge Durango. The Kuhnus Dodge dealership of Belvidere is willing to purchase these squads for a total of $14,000. I would request two motions, first being a motion to authorize the sale of two surplus police vehicles. One 2012 Dodge Durango, VIN number 1C4RDJFG9ECC358761. And a 2014 Dodge Durango, VIN 1C4RDJFGXCC361440, to the Kuhnus Dodge dealership, Belvidere, for the total sale price of $14,000.
Second on that? Wendy? Questions on the motion? No questions? Let's have a roll vote? Roll call, roll call vote.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Okay, can I get a... Oh, yes, please.
And then I would request a second motion to replace squad number two with a 2021 Dodge Charger at a cost not to exceed $41,062.50, with payment to come from the insurance check, $27,062.50 from CCMSI and $14,000 from the sale of two Dodge Durangos.
Can I have a motion? Flurry, second on that? Arivolo?
I'm second.
Any questions? Dan?
So, out of curiosity, what does happen to the smashed-up squad, even though the insurance is giving you a check? What does happen to the physical car as far as where it goes or what happens to its disposition? They physically tell them to take it?
Any other questions? Tom?
So this is a direct replacement for the one that was wrecked, right? This isn't related to the other squads we just talked about?
No, this is a squad that we are operating, and it was caught. It was in a crash, and we are simply just replacing it.
Any other questions on the purchase? No more questions? A roll call vote, please.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
D, request for body worn camera network server.
If you'll turn to the memo in your packet, during the implementation phase of the body worn cameras for the Belvidere Police Department, it was discovered that the current network servers incompatible with requirements needed by CDS Office Technologies. The Belvidere Police Department is requesting $10,583 for the purchase, build, and implementation of a new network server to store the videos captured by the department issued body worn cameras that the officers will be wearing. The initial purchase of the body worn cameras from CDS Office Technologies was $109,247, with $50,000 coming from a donation from the community. The total cost with the new network server will be $119,830. In contrast, just a bit of history, the two additional quotes from Exxon and Axis Communications the police department presented during the initial request for purchase of body cameras were still more expensive. Exxon quoted the police department $356,903.50, and Axis Communications quoted the police department $195,461.77. I would request a motion to authorize the Belvidere Police Department to purchase, build, and install a new network server not to exceed $10,583, come from Belvidere Police Department equipment.
Can we have a motion to this? Or Porter, motion, second please? Snow, second? Any questions on this? Tom?
Okay, I was just wondering, is this a proven design that's been in use elsewhere so we know that it's reliable, since it is quite a bit more, or quite a bit less expensive?
Oh, absolutely. This was one of the models that our department had tested and evaluated for a couple of months prior to making the decision to go with this company. Not to mention Panasonic, the in-card cameras that we currently are operating and have been projected.
Any other questions? Dan?
I have questions.
Dan first, Marcia?
I know the... Have you talked with the Sheriff's Department, see if they're getting body cams, see if we can maybe share the cost eventually for this new servers? It's not a lot, but just care is just to cut cost for everybody.
Yeah, we had those conversations, and it does not sound, and I don't want to put words in the sheriff's mouth, but at least at this point, they are not looking to go to body cams, body cameras, body worn cameras. And are agreeable that when that time does happen, that we'll look at revisiting, splitting this cost, but as of right now, we're going to be the only department with body worn cameras and therefore be responsible for that cost.
Marcia?
Thank you. I believe that the new law is, I think by 2025, every department has to have them in Illinois, but I could be wrong on that. I have a few questions. My first one is, did we purchase... October 5th of 2020, we accepted the donation, and then on December 21st of 2020, we entered into an agreement with CPS or CDS Technologies. Are we leasing those, or did we purchase those, Chief?
No, we purchased them.
Okay, so I did a little bit of research, and I found out that the Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board actually offers a grant program for body worn cameras. Any body worn camera that was purchased between 7/1 of 2020 and 6/30 of 2021 is eligible for this grant. But applications are only accepted until 5:00 PM on Saturday, May 15th, and there won't be any extensions. What they need is receipts of purchase and payment dated between 7/1/20 and 6/30/2021, the make, model, serial number for the cameras. And the receipts for implementation or installation if they were going in the car. There's some paperwork to be filled out, obviously. I thought maybe that might fall under Sandy Daniel's umbrella, since we don't have Becky anymore. But are you aware of this grant, and have you guys looked into that? Because if we could recapture the money for the cameras, that would go a long way for paying for the server, which servers are not reimbursable under the grant.
Yeah, you are correct. It is by 2025 that all departments have to have body worn cameras. By the time that this camera grant had come out, we had already purchased the cameras, the body worn cameras through CDS, and the purchase date would not have fallen between those dates that the grant requires. We are familiar with it. We've purchased numerous, I think probably all of our squad card in-card cameras came with the camera going through the staples or highlights.
Okay, because my paperwork shows that we actually entered into the agreement with CDS Technologies on December 21st, 2020, and the grant range is anywhere between July 1st, 2020, and June 30th, 2021. So if we did it on December 21st, that does fall into that range.
I can take a look at it again and see if that's something that, you know, we can take advantage of. Absolutely. If it's a grant that we can write for, we've done it before, and something we can do again, that's not a problem. I would just have to take a look at those dates and see why we've worked on it already.
Okay, it'd be great, but you only have until May 15th, so just to let you know.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Dan, Snow?
So the server just really manipulates and controls the traffic of information going to and from, because I assume all the information that's going to be stored from the cameras is going to go out on the cloud, so it has an infinite number? Or is this going to store? And how long can it handle the load that may be required? And then if the county winds up piggybacking on it, are we going to be in a predicament again, or we'll just expand it when that time comes?
Yeah. When the time comes that the county comes on board with body worn cameras, and we anticipate that we would treat that storage issue the same as we do currently with our squad card cameras, and it's currently the public safety building expense, so they cover half, we cover half, and when the server needs to be upgraded, they, you know, buy whatever equipment or hardware that they need to buy, and then ultimately, it's just split between the facility accounts. As far as what this particular hardware does, is this would be responsible for actually storing the videos. And that's why it's necessary in order for us to begin the body worn camera process.
Tom?
Chief, do you have any type of a projected completed date for when we're going to be fully functional with this system then?
I can only guesstimate at this point, once we have this, because we're kind of at the mercy of IT, depending on how long it takes either them or CDS to put together the server and install it and get that online. And then there's some logistical issues that we're dealing with. I hope how they- I hope, I would say within the next two, two to three weeks, maybe next month, two months. Yeah, it shouldn't be too long.
Any other questions? Seeing no other questions? Oh, Wendy?
This is a silly question, but we did the digit checks or like if you get a ticket?
Digit ticket, yes.
Yeah, so would this go along with that too if somebody had to go to court? You know, that you would take the camera? I mean, how does that work? Do you use that in court sometimes, body cams?
Potentially. It depends on what type of video it, uh, it captured. Uh, but it would be video evidence and if there was something incriminating or that helped support probable cause or the, uh, evidence that, uh, the officer wrote the ticket for. Yeah, and that could be used, absolutely.
Any other questions for the chief? Seeing none, how about a roll call vote?
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
E, Fire Department Annual Report. Five. You don't have to rush.
Right. Thank you. Uh, this is, um, right now I, I have this on and I can get it on zip. I was trying for the, for individuals who were at home, uh, so that you can see this. Uh, and for anyone else in the audience here today as well, they can also get it to you, so. All right, there's our mission statement. Um, I'm not going to read everything here. I just want to know that, that is ours. Uh, that's what we, we strive to, uh, live up to every single day. This is demographics of, uh, Belvidere. As you see, uh, down at the bottom there, we had a list of our equipment that we, uh, use to cover the city. Also, um, a list of our personnel. Here's our organization chart, um, it was updated on four twenty, twenty-one. Uh, a few of our, yeah, a few of our guys that, uh, will be promoting, most notably Lieutenant Drawl and Captain Laterno on five-three. Uh, these are our most recent hires. Uh, special note with these six individuals, they are all Belvidere and or Boone County residents, uh, born and raised. At least it gives you time to look at them. Uh, upcoming retirements, uh, Captain Martin Sabrakel, twenty-seven years with the fire department. Firefighter Chuck Otto, twenty years with the fire department. And firefighter Josh Oates, also with twenty years on the F D. Here's, uh, some apparatus bars. This is our newest apparatus. This engine one-on-one is a twenty-eighteen Lexus. And then ladder one-fifty is a twenty-eleven Lexus. Here's, this is our newest, uh, vehicle right here, rapid response vehicle. This is a, commonly referred to as a mini pumper. Uh, this is rescue one forty-two. It's getting close to be, uh, in service. Uh, we have just a few minor details. Uh, most notably, we need to, uh, train everybody in the department and its use.
Does it carry you on?
Yes. Uh, fire rescue training, this is, uh, Captain Sean Chadle. He coordinates our, our training for the department. Uh, as you see, there's many things that we do, uh, the following are just some of the disciplines we train for. Uh, those are the most notable ones, but there's many more. Please stop me if anybody has any questions for me. This is the average training hours per member by category. As you can see, uh, firefighting is the, one of the most average amount of time, uh, followed by EMS and hazmat. Of note for two of the three there, um, those like structural firefighter and hazardous materials, those are rare incidents. Um, hazardous materials definitely being rare, uh, but they do exist. And the rare incidents, we had to train just as much to be ready for those types of calls. Some fire training, oops, fire training shots right there.
Did you guys participate in one of the talks?
We did, yes. Uh, myself and, uh, three others in the fire department went out there and worked the protest. Thirty to forty firefighters from north or from the boot, Belvidere. Rescue training, different disciplines there, propelling, water rescue. Uh, EMS training, that's Captain David Burick in your lower right. Uh, he coordinates our medical training and keeps all the paramedics, uh, up to speed as far as their licensing. Just a couple of pictures of their, uh, of different training that we're doing. And the one in the middle down there is a, a dog, actually a gentleman came and introduced a, uh, O two, O two for this dog, so he can form up to their face or to their, to their snout. CPR training, uh, twenty twenty statistics, typically this is probably three times is what, uh, is shown on the screen here. Uh, trained sixty-three students, fifty-two healthcare providers, eight non-healthcare students, and eight non-healthcare students learning CPR A D. Firefighter Greg Philatos is our coordinator for CPR and also he's, uh, our child safety seat program coordinator. Typically, uh, of course, you know, with the pandemic, um, we don't have, we didn't have a whole bunch of people coming through, as you all can imagine. Hopefully we'll get back to teaching our community CPR again this year. Uh, child safety seats, like I said, um, this year we did thirty-two child safety seat installations. Uh, a lot of times people will call us, uh, to come by and make sure that their, the safety seats are, uh, okay for their kids. Uh, one of the things you cannot leave, uh, law is that you cannot leave a hospital without having a proper installation by certified technician. Leave the hospital with the newborn baby. Uh, we have ten certified technicians on the Belvedere Fire Department. So at just about any time, um, we'll have somebody that's on duty so they can come and, um, get their seats checked.
And which station would they generally?
Um, either one, it'll be either one. It's kind of a, whoever's on duty that they, ten people with ten people certified. Typically have like, we have one or, you know, one at each station. A lot of time it works out. This is our water rescue team. Um, in the past, we'd have two or three people. Uh, we're getting, a lot of people like diving. So, uh, we've definitely upped our game in this, in this area and on this team. Uh, team leader, uh, will be Dan Drawl. Sorry we're missing the names here somehow, but it'd be Dan Drawl. He's in charge of that, of this team. Uh, the shore leader would be Lieutenant Jason Swanson. Then, as you can see, we got, um, two, three, four, five, we have five divers now. The two most recent divers that have come on board are the two gentlemen on the lower right. This is our inspection girl, um, who actually is in charge of this. We just went by seniority here, but, uh, who's in charge of this is Travis Tangy. He's our inspection coordinator, does a really good job with it. Jeff Vaughn is our newest inspector. And Jim Creves and Mark Beck have been doing it for a number of years now. So in twenty twenty, target hazards that we inspected, this is ongoing. Uh, all those are listed. Uh, we go there because the, the high risk for civilian firefighter injury or loss of life exists at all these places. So therefore, these are target hazards and, uh, we go to these, uh, different businesses, schools, churches and what have you.
What if they think, um, church thing to the end?
Uh, this is the high potential for people being, uh, in service. Daycares are also, um, target hazard. Uh, this, uh, is of note here. This is something we just started doing. Uh, we're putting, uh, the funny cap on that you can see there with the cable. That's a stores, uh, connect, a cap. Um, this is something that we've been putting on all the, uh, the new, uh, new hybrids that we get in. And, uh, we do it at target hazards again. The most notably that's schools, daycares, health cares, uh, high occupant loads. Um, what this does, it, this, it takes off like thirty seconds, um, of the actual fire incident force. Uh, the other, the other gold type would be that you have to, you have to unscrew them with a hydra wrench. Uh, these here are a quick release, so.
So you don't need a special piece of equipment or any, like, you can do it?
No, you, it's, it's got a, a safety lock on it, but yeah, I mean, people.
But you can't activate it without the wrench on the top.
That's correct. We came to, uh, city council, I believe, almost a year ago, uh, with the RISER compliance engine. And this is just some of the results that's taking place with this. Uh, some of the inspection of, uh, protection systems here in Belvidere. That list on the right, and it's ongoing and, uh, continues to go up each and every day. That was a lifesaver to us, uh, as far as, um, being a smaller department and all the things that we have to do. Uh, one of the things we're not able to get out was to the businesses and check their suppression systems. So therefore, this RISER compliance engine is, like I said, it's going to got some. Also, this past year, we implemented the RED-X program. So we have the RED-X program, uh, that's been put into place here in Belvidere. Uh, if you, if, if you can recall, what we do is we put RED-Xs, uh, on the buildings, on the front of the buildings, uh, indicating that this house is abandoned property. So it gives our guys a, a heads up as to potential hazards involved there. This is T E M S. This is, uh, the Tactical Emergency Medical Service. Um, this is a, this is a team that would come out if SWAT for the Belvedere Police Department, if the SWAT team was activated. Uh, these, these guys would come out, maybe called out as well. Uh, Josh Oates, uh, this earlier I mentioned, Josh is retiring, uh, in June. And, uh, Josh was one of the first T E M S, uh, T E M S members. And, uh, so I thought it fitting that he should be up there, so. When Josh is gone, uh, Joe Erber is now putting, uh, is in his place, so.
Do you train more people on the department to be able to participate?
This is a specialized group. Uh, these guys are, they work solely with the police department. So, um, yeah, they do not, uh, I think it's, I believe it's twice a month they go up and train.
But are there other firefighters that are in the process of training? For instance, one of your current three could like have get hurt or, or whatever.
Yeah, and, uh, Joe Erber is the latest, okay? We just brought him on board. So there's nobody else after that. They have to go through a testing process to get on that team. They have to do a bunch of different things, a lot like what the police have to do. Uh, they work body armor and different.
And are there people?
Wanting to get out.
Wanting to see them?
Yes, certainly are. They only want a certain amount to watch out, so watch for them. All right, this little picture of the guys just after a little training event, uh, between the tones. This is some other things we do. Public education, uh, firefighter, her lieutenant, excuse me, Lieutenant Chad Cunningham, he's in charge of this. Uh, numerous different things we do. And again, COVID knocked us down a little bit this year. Uh, we highly anticipate getting back, uh, especially getting back into schools like we like to do. There are just some of the events that we do, um, yearly. Quite a list on the left there. Love to be involved in that. One of the, one of the ones that I've heard lately, I've been a couple of times a year, Habitat for Humanity. Uh, it's something we like to do as well. Um, a lot of birthday drive-bys this year until it got overwhelming. And we're going to back down a little bit from that. M D A fill the boot, uh, something to note here, uh, Belvedere Fire Department was ranked twentieth in the nation out of nine hundred and twelve participating locals with, uh, what we raised last year. So thanks again to the city of Belvidere, they always step up and labor like us. Really proud of that. There's another neat thing that happened, uh, during this past year was the Explorer Program. Uh, for a long time, we're not involved in it. Um, it was basically up at District Three up in Popper Road. Um, and then also District Number Two helped out as well. But we all got together and now all four agencies are involved in Explorer training and for potential future firefighters. I'm already seeing some of these guys on, on fire scenes. And, uh, just recently, this past Saturday, we had the, the training evolutions up in, up on Blaine Road. And I see, also seen two or three of these guys too, so neat, it's working. Firefighter Chris, or, I'm sorry, Lieutenant Chris Laterno, soon to be Captain Laterno on May third. He's a coordinator for, uh, station and grounds maintenance. This is, uh, a lot of the things that we do in between. We just talk about cutting grass, yep, we cut our own grass, all right? So Chris is really good about, uh, coordinating a lot of different things. Our, our stations look good and our, and our buildings are looking well as well. You guys heard about this a lot, uh, during this past year. This is station number one upstairs remodel. Uh, let's see how she do. So from left to right, you can see that's what it was, the upper, upper left, and then right in the middle, uh, drywall. And then the finished product is on the right. So I'm hoping you guys come by and check it out. It's pretty, it's pretty nice. Down at the bottom, this is the hallway, stair shot, and then another drywall. And then now the finished product on the right. Leads into the Officer of the Day office. Apparatus maintenance repair, this, this responsibility falls to Lieutenant Jason Swanson. He's responsible for all that, uh, equipment makes, maintenance as well. Part of our, of course, we always want to keep our fire trucks looking shiny. That's what you see in a couple of these pictures. And then, uh, we also do some maintenance that we can handle in the stations, um, by ourselves. We do that. But the bigger things we do take to, uh, the RAC Fire Department or we go down to our, our city yard for our mechanics here.
Do you use Rain-X? Do you use Rain-X on windmills that you do?
No, windmills. Physical and mental health wellness maintenance. This, uh, is firefighter Kevin Fox. He's our, he's our peer. He's our peer guy who, he goes to classes, uh, downstate, comes back and just makes sure that we're, our mental wellness is checked. Uh, one of the things we also, we like to have the guys work out. We, uh, provide a time during period of the day, typically from three o'clock to, to five o'clock, somewhere in there. We, we hope our people take advantage, uh, of the opportunities that present themselves, such as, uh, the, uh, some of the weight training we have there, the elliptical, treadmill and things like that. So we have different things they can do. elliptical, treadmill and things like that, so we have different things they can do and we fully expect that they give their best effort to do it.
And their pool table?
Pool table, yes, yeah, that's how much exercise though.
Nine A and four A.
It's like putting this in every year, this is something that, you know, we also do, BFD Honor Guard comes out, we do parades, unfortunately, you know, we do fortunately funerals for folks that who request us and also other events throughout the state. This is an annual softball game that we, we do, we usually take care, we beat the cops. All right, we've lost the last three years, but only by one. So, yeah, this is our year.
Well, you had a ringer right over there and you could throw.
He's not a ringer personally.
Funny though.
Okay.
Oh, look at that.
Yeah, yeah.
Come on.
Oh, that one, okay, yes. Public, public safety statue, this, something of note here, this, you see like three different seasons, A shift, looks like during the fall, B shifts in the summer and then C's in the winter, this is all in October, all these pictures were taken, so we had quite a change in Northern Illinois weather, so, but thanks to the Wolf family for providing this awesome statue. This year somebody put scarves on it for winter time, so I thought that was neat too. Here's a few numbers, a couple scenes right here, fire scenes and water rescue and extrication. Calls by year, as you see twenty, twenty ten, about twenty-four hundred calls, twenty fifteen, twenty-nine hundred calls and twenty twenty, we're up to thirty-two fifty-five, so that graph continues to go up. This next one is calls by month, this year, biggest call volume was in the summer at Calls by day, as you might imagine, Mondays are highest, highest count and then Tuesdays.
Right Monday.
It's a Monday, I don't know, there's no, no real reason for it. This next slide here is the incident calls by area, Station One downtown on State Street, we receive fifty-five percent of the calls and Station Two forty-five percent. Here's one slide this year is fire rescue versus EMS, as you all know, EMS does take the majority of our calls and our efforts, followed by fire rescue incidents and then other, there's a lot of other things, things that we might do going out, helping our citizens out. Property value. Question, Alter?
Yeah, thanks, so when you say that fifty-five percent of the calls go downtown and forty-five come to number two, how's that giving up, is that like downtown services the north side and number two services the south side?
Yes, that is how it is, basically we cut the, we cut the city in half and Station One responds to the north side, pretty much, we do handle, Station One handles some on the south side of the river, but we go all the way on the north side of the river, all the way to the north side of town, so.
Okay, thank you.
Are the railroad tracks that pretty much cut off line or not?
No, not necessarily, no, it's, we did a study years back and I think we continue to do that study where we find out, you know, the majority of the population, calls and volume and stuff like that and we, they put it all in together and come up these, like the lines of where we want to, you know.
That generally have it.
During this past year, former firefighter, retired Riker Carlton passed away and that was a, you know, as everyone knows, during the COVID time here, it was difficult to go in and attend these, however, we were able to do it with, doing the right precautions and stuff, so we, we sent him off right and his family really appreciated it, so we wore Class A uniforms and went and did a firefighter walk through for him. And thanks to the citizens of Belvidere, Belvidere City Council, city administration, former Mayor Chamberlain for your support and to new mayor Morris for the years to come. Belvidere Fire Department's vision, equipped, trained, fit, supported, ready, people to do the job right.
As it concludes my report.
Any questions for the chief about the manual? Well, hearing none. Let's see, where we go, personal finance unfinished, none, financing personnel, new business, none. Now down to other, disposition of vacant lot at four oh seven West Madison Street.
I put a memo in the committee's packet, quite frankly, this has been as much work by Brent Anderson as anybody. You recall that four oh seven West Madison Street is a property that we obtained title to through abandoned properties, court action that I filed on behalf of the city was not part of land bank endeavors, but is the same process. And after we got title to the vacant, the abandoned lot, the council directed Public Works to remove the structures that were on that and so it is now clear and empty land. While back, I presented a memo outlining different things that the city could do with the property and the council asked us to look at perhaps inquiring of the adjoining property owners as to whether they'd be interested in purchasing either one of them, either the whole thing or split it between them or what have you, to see if they want to expand their existing lots. Brent has talked to both of those entities, those people that own the properties and they are not interested in acquiring four oh seven West Madison Street. So that puts us back at square one where we have several options that the council could choose to take, one would be to transfer the property to a nonprofit-like Habitat for Humanity, I have spoken with them and they've called me multiple times and sent emails, Habitat is very interested in acquiring the property for placement of a home on that property, which of course will put it back on the tax rolls in the future. The second option is to transfer the property to Northern Illinois Land Bank if they have an interest in it, I frankly have not heard whether or not they want that property. Third option would be to list it for sale with a local real estate agent and then of course the last one is to auction the property. The city has in the past provided some loss to Habitat, I can think of one, which was on Main Street many, many, many years ago, that we had to condemn it because of a fire and we condemned that and ultimately Habitat took over that property, put a house on that and of course that is now inhabited and has been for many years. But I'm ready to answer any questions that you may have and inquire as to what is the desire of the council?
I'd make a motion to have it transferred to Habitat for Humanity.
Can I get a second on that?
I'll second that.
Second, questions, Tom.
I have a question.
Tom first.
I was just wondering if we do have any idea of the value of this land at all?
I would defer to Brent, I don't know.
The assessor's office has the property value listed at about fifteen thousand.
Marcia.
That was my question, I was just wondering if we ever did have it surveyed and if we knew what the value was.
Okay, any other questions about this? Okay, let's have a roll call vote on this.
Bradcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
And this will come back in ordinance form.
Okay, next, Appleton Road Speed Survey.
Is Habitat chomping at the bit that we maybe want to waive or put that on the agenda to potentially waive the two week layover?
Mr. Repay, how fast do you need the property?
I must partway out.
Yeah, I figured, you ducked back in very quickly, the question was, are you in a hurry, currently it's going to require a city ordinance to effectuate this transfer, that usually has a two week layover, so come to council on May third and then be approved two weeks after that, is that an issue or do you need it faster?
Ideally, we would like to break ground as soon as possible, the typical timeframe we break ground on most properties is in April soon as the rain allows, so we're already a little bit behind the eight ball there to finish hopefully in October and if there are other delays or otherwise during the summer, that can push us out to November, December. So ideally, yes, we would appreciate any consideration for moving it up.
If there's no objection from the council, put a motion to waive the two week layover requirement before this one on the agenda next week.
Next week, okay. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Marcia, please.
So by donating this property to Habitat for Humanity and they're looking to build right away, are they going to be also looking for us to waive the water and sewer hookups like we normally do for them?
In this case, you will not have to, the only thing you'll waive is the actual cost of the meter because there was an existing structure already on that property, so theoretically there's not a, there's not, the recapture wouldn't apply, or connection fees, I'm sorry, connection fees would not apply because there was already a previous connection there and those connections have been upgraded with clean out, Santos sewer clean out installed the property line as well as the water service as well, so they're all ready to go stubbed to the property line.
Okay, thank you Brent.
Any other questions? Moving along, B, Appleton Road Speed Study, Brent, I believe that's you.
Yeah, so in your packet is a memo from myself, as you recall, residents were in concerned with the speed on Appleton Road between Locust and Chrysler Drive, police department conducted several speed studies, three in fact, both northbound and southbound, those are summarized in the, in the form attached to the memo, if you work through that form, come to the bottom line, results of those speed studies, and they were at least a minimum of a hundred vehicles in each direction, those three different times and those times are done during off-peak hours recommended, so don't do Mondays, don't do Fridays and don't do shift change time periods, avoid the seven to nine and the, and the three to six time slots, so they were done at other times to get an accurate, try to get an accurate reading of the typical speeds that are established here by the motorists. Bottom line is, when you factor everything down, the adjusted prevailing speed came to thirty-nine miles an hour, which you round to the nearest five mile an hour increment, which brings you back to the forty, therefore based on the results, I would recommend that there be no changes to the current posted speed limit of forty mile per hour for that section of Appleton Road.
Okay, do we have any questions about this? Dan, Snow.
So I would guess that, did the speed trailer ever make it out there, I didn't go there and are we looking at enforcement issues more so?
Yeah, the speed trailer was put out there pretty much from the get-go and that's what caught a great deal of the speed, in the speed study, it caught the northbound and southbound traffic, then officers also supplemented that with individual enforcement. Once we got the data from the speed trailer to better localize when we were seeing that the most speeders, we continued the enforcement focusing on those times.
And was there a lot of enforcement or just the presence of them deter people?
No, we do have a lot of enforcement, there have been some significant traffic stops, I'll have that information for you once the enforcement details are done, but as of right now, I don't have the specifics for it, but I will bring that to the council once those details are done.
Any other questions? Jim?
Everybody heard about the recordings of people doing sixty and seventy miles an
I don't have the information in front of me specifically to refer to, we did have some significant data captured on the speed trailer documenting a great deal of speeders, the actual speeds, I don't have in front of me, I don't know if Brent has that information contained in his packet or not, but that could be something that is included with the enforcement details that I provide later on.
Well, the way it comes to me is he's saying that people are doing maybe forty-five, there's a lot more people out there doing forty-five, fifty to sixty miles an hour going by there all the time and you guys are too busy with the rest of the town, your police department to be sitting there the whole time. So if we slowed the speed limit down from Sixth Street down to Locust, would make a big difference, even if you put in a temporary stop sign at Sixth Street, just to see how it would help out. It's better than not doing nothing, you guys are too busy, stick three squad cars there to keep watching and what about the rest of the town?
Well, we try and focus where we're needed and we prioritize things as they come up, like you and I had talked about previously, I mean, you know, your street's not the only one we get speeder complaints about.
That's what I mean, it's, you guys are so busy doing everything, look at Subway got robbed.
Sure.
You guys are probably out trying to stop people from speeding.
Well, not necessarily, we, you know, we do the best we can with the restrictions and limitations we have, we can't be everywhere all at once, we try and identify the, you know, what's important to our community and then respond accordingly.
Did any of the maintenance people from the street department play by, they almost got hit by a semi that was doing at least sixty miles an hour by Sixth Street, he couldn't even stop for those guys, a lady had to stop with her car so she didn't get hit.
Sure.
Wouldn't you think the speed limit should be slowed down?
Well, and, you know, like we had spoke before, you know, we're simply in charge of enforcing what the speed limit is.
Right.
We're not in charge of, you know, regulating what the speed's supposed to be and ultimately, you know, I'm not saying that there aren't people that speed through there and speed that are significantly over the posted speed limit signs, but there is a process that we had to go through in order to identify if there was a change that needed to be made and that's what Director Anderson was, was doing.
We don't need any of our maintenance people to get hurt.
No, absolutely not.
That's the second time I've seen them where they almost got hit, that's why the speed limit is way too fast there. Why do we need, anyplace else in town is twenty-five miles an hour, thirty, that's part of town, why do we need to have it forty miles an hour, because everybody's going to be doing fifty and sixty.
Well, again, that's why you go through the process and have a speed study done.
You know, I, I watch the thing every day how everybody speeds by there.
And you determine what that eighty-fifth percentile speed and what the manual and uniform traffic control devices indicates, which is through the Federal Highway Administration, which basically establishes the policies that all states have to go by for establishment of speed limits and when you do these speed studies, the eighty-fifth percentile and that's what they determine and that's why you do it on off-peak hours and not Mondays, not Fridays when traffic congestion and stuff, so you can get a, basically a free flow of traffic and when you do those studies and you determine that eighty-fifth percentile, they determine that's what the most people, the most, the biggest range of drivers are comfortable driving that street at a safe speed and that's how they, what they use to determine that. Now there's factors.
They might turn around and change the rest of the streets.
There's, there's other, there's, there's other factors that you can use. There's other factors that you can utilize to reduce that. And again, going through the, the chart that I, that I attached with the recommendations, uh, with the memo, um, there's conflicts there and there's enough conflicts, enough driveways, enough intersections to offer a ten percent reduction. There was not enough accidents. We looked at the accidents in that corridor. That did not qualify for reduction. Um, and it does not, right now, the requirements for a, a always-stop condition have not been met for Sixth Streets and, uh, Appleton Road as well. So we looked at all of those things and that's why I say the prevailing speed arrived at was thirty-nine miles an hour.
So what would happen if we did drop the speed limit and it goes against the, the whole?
You would expect a higher rate of speeders, basically. Because everybody's driving, if, if, if it's posted at forty and if, like the gentleman says, if everybody's doing an average and, and you can see through the ten mile an hour pace, the upper limits of the ten mile pace were right between forty, forty-five and fifty, as well as the eighty-fifth percentiles were forty-two to forty-four. So that's already telling you that the forty is at the bottom end, the very bottom end of what the traffic, of what the majority, the eighty-fifth percentile of traffic is driving that roadway at already, which means there's only fifteen percent that are exceeding that speed limit. So I know, um, based on the results supplied by the police department, I think the highest speed of the, the, the three different, um, speed studies that were done, the highest speed on each one of those was seventy, seventy-one miles an hour. But again, that's only fifteen percent of the motoring public that was measured during those studies.
They don't say that's a little ridiculous?
Which is where the enforcement comes in.
The guys said they don't have time to sit there all the time. They got the rest of the town to take care of it.
Anyone, oh, chief?
Well, and I just want to assure you that, uh, you know, if there is a, a priority call that comes in, they're not, uh, dedicated, uh, to that, uh, speed detail only. I mean, obviously, if we have something that comes in that requires them to pull off, they'll pull off.
Anyone got a motion to make on this? Uh, if we don't make a motion on this at this time, we can always come back and re-study this again.
Certainly.
Certainly, we can, okay.
I have a question.
Wendy, please.
When, when the police are there, I saw them by the grain bin, are they supposed to be obvious or can they be a little bit hidden? Because it was real obvious to me that they were doing a speed thing and most people were slowing down. But I've seen people like go out on the gravel, you know, to try to pass somebody that's slowing down or whatever.
Yeah, there's going to be certain limitations with the, uh, the radars that we use because they're going to have to get a certain, uh, angle in, in order to get, uh, the radar to actually, um, uh, hit the targeted vehicle. Uh, so we are limited in, to a degree that way. Uh, uh, obviously, we do want to, uh, try to, uh, you know, uh, be in an area that's going to be fairly covert if possible, but that's just not always a possibility.
But especially during the speed study, when the speed study itself was done, not necessarily enforcement, but when the speed study was done, yes, it was unmarked vehicle, plain, plain vehicle to take the counts because you want to get the, try to get as most accurate information, typical information as you can for the traffic pattern.
Now, when are we planning on possibly four lanes? We were discussing that before.
Uh, that has not been decided yet. Uh, we, uh, it's going through R one, uh, that grant application that was submitted through R one. We had our technical committee meeting on that last week. Uh, two projects recommended to Policy Committee for Possible Funding. Appleton was one of the two. The other one was Riverside Boulevard, uh, in Love's Park, uh, in Boone, in Winnebago County. And, uh, policy meets, uh, this Friday, uh, and we'll see what action they take, if any.
Okay, so possibly Friday. Any other questions or concerns? Does anyone want to make a motion on this? Okay. Moving along. Belveter Park District, Belveter Cemetery Recapture.
And again, there's a memo in your packets. Uh, you recall, back in about the two thousand and three timeframe, we annexed what is now the Prairie Fields, uh, Park District property. At that time, the Park District placed water mains essentially in fairgrounds, road, and those water mains were oversized to allow future development to connect to them. In two thousand and eight, the city council adopted recapture ordinance, whereby we agreed to recapture certain amounts of the new connections to that water main to compensate the Park District for that upsizing. And then, as you all know, in two thousand and twenty, we annexed the actual Belveter Cemetery. Uh, they have worked out an agreement with the Park District where they're going to pay a reduced amount on the recapture fees they would otherwise owe to connect their new administrative building to that water main. Um, and that set forth in the agreement that was attached to my memo. The only reason we're involved in this at all is we're the collection agent, so to speak, for the Park District. So I want something in writing that's very clear to the city that we are not to connect, to collect the recapture fee with respect to that building from the cemetery. They're going to pay the Park District directly. So what I recommend is a motion to approve the memorandum of standing, ask for improvement of Belveter Cemetery Association land and Belveter Park District recapture agreement, and authorize the mayor to execute the memorandum of understanding.
Can I get a motion on this? Alderman Snow, second from Alderman Porter. Any questions? Dan Snow?
So the cemetery is getting, or the park, the, the entity is getting a reduced rate from the other one. Does that still, and we're just the administrator of the money coming in and out. So at some point, they're going to be missing out on X number of dollars in their coffers for reimbursement since they paid for the infrastructure. So are they going to be dinging anybody else additionally?
No.
That would hook up to make up that loss?
No, because the ordinance is already set in stone.
Any other questions? Seeing none, let's have a roll call vote.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Bradcliffe?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
D, Block Party Request for One Forty Buchanan Street.
Make the motion.
Beacon.
Beacon, oh, I'm sorry. Beacon Drive, sorry about that.
I'll make that motion.
Dan Snow makes the motion, second by?
Elster.
Dan Arivolo? Any discussion? Dan Snow?
So it, it, the start time is two P M., but it doesn't have an ending time, which, um, could pose an issue or concern, um, with the scoop there is.
I think typically we always end it at ten P M. I think at the latest, right?
I'm wondering if we should stipulate a, um, ending time, just to clarify. And I'm assuming this is on a Saturday?
That's for a wedding reception, I have no idea.
I should have looked that up. I didn't think to.
Someone's looking it up here. Saturday.
If you want to limit it, I suggest you put it into the approval itself.
I would amend the.
I'm not quickly seeing anything that limits the time limit. There might be something I could, but I'm not finding it quickly.
I'd, I'd make a, a motion to amend my motion to approve to, um, for the festivities to end at ten P M.
Motion by Dan Snow, second by, for Tom Porter, for the ten P M, closing.
I'd like to point out that all we're talking about is the actual use of the street.
Mm-hmm.
We can't necessarily make them stop using their private property at ten o'clock so long as they're not in violation of noise provisions within our municipal code.
Let's have a roll call vote on this, if no other questions.
Stevens?
What are we voting on, ten P M. or eleven?
What's that, Marcia?
Are we voting on ten P M. or eleven?
Ten P M., I believe. Is that what Dan, Dan said, ten P M.? Any other questions? Roll call vote.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Nay.
Porter?
Aye.
Bradcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Okay, that is the last part.
Do we have to roll call on it as amended?
Correct. Oh, we gotta get, uh, the ten o'clock amendment part of it.
No, the original motion.
Just did the ten o'clock, you know, just for the block party. That's going to end at ten o'clock.
Okay. Can I have any more discussion on it? Because we're now.
And question, I'm assuming Sarah, they turned this into you?
Yes.
And we did reiterate no alcohol in the.
In the street?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a given.
Okay, well, I mean,
Yes.
physically told them, you know, because, just because it's in verbiage here doesn't mean that they read it.
It'll be in the letter I send them to regarding the approval.
Any other questions? Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Nay.
Porter?
Aye.
Bradcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Okay. Seeing nothing else on the agenda, how about if we go for an adjournment? Who'd like to make the motion?
I think it should be a roll call.
Flurry, Porter? Anyone against, uh, leaving tonight? Well, good. Everyone have a nice evening.